Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to justice or honor. Thank you. Any subtractions for the consent agenda? I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Okay, planning commission report. What do we have for that, Garth? It's kind of roles are reversed tonight, huh? You had all the people, now I got all the people.
So we had, uh... The, uh, public hearing for the...
Garth, you better pull it up.
Yeah.
Those ones in the back, they won't be able to hear.
This better?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We had the, uh, public hearing for the Howard Lake Sanctuary preliminary plat and CUP PUD request. Motion for approval.
Okay. Pages two through thirty-six. Any questions on that? I entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, there's two motions here. One is to approve the CUP for the PUD, and then the second one would be for the two of the...
Those in the packet. Okay, motion maker want to do the, uh... Which one do we have to do first?
Both of my motion.
Both of them?
You didn't hear me.
Oh, I think we gotta do them one at a time, though.
One at a time?
Yep, so... Which, uh, one do we have to do first?
So you do the CUP first that approves the planned unit development.
Okay.
And then the plat.
Okay, motion maker...
Moved on his first motion.
Okay. Second or...
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Second motion was... Mr. Griffith?
A preliminary plat.
Preliminary plat. Someone want to make a motion to approve or deny?
Second.
Approve.
Most moved to approve, okay, second. Any other discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Okay. So that was that.
Then we had a public hearing for six nine three nine one thirty-fifth Avenue, CUP amendment and variance request. And that was motioned on for approval.
Okay.
Pending, I believe it was a plan, landscape plan, or a buffer zone plan.
Sure.
And then there was also questions about a variance for a holding tank for bathroom facilities in the accessory building.
We took care of that on Tuesday.
I heard.
So that one's already been acted on.
Yeah.
Okay, we can move on to the next one.
And the next one was the L.A. District text amendment. There was a motion for denial.
Okay.
I believe that leaves the text amendment up to the city council.
Okay, so for clarity, the, uh, text amendment is a generic amendment about definition of light industrial?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, this text amendment was initiated by the city council when applications for the asphalt plant, uh, were considered. The city staff drafted the amendment, reviewed it two separate meetings with the planning commission. It's listed as city draft version two dated October 4th, uh, 2017.
Okay. So I guess at this time I call on the council. What do you guys think? Do you want to keep moving forward with it, or, um... Do we take the planning commission's recommendation?
I think we move forward with it.
Okay.
You can't hear back here, sorry.
Okay, well, so at this point, I... So you guys are gonna have to put the signs just lowered so that they don't block other people's views. You have to keep, keep the murmur down because it is hard to hear in this room. We don't have a lot of, a lot of space. And I really, you know, if something happens you don't like, I don't want the outbursts because it's just gonna disrupt our public process here, so... Denny, what were you saying? Maybe you want to move your microphone a little closer.
Go ahead and move.
Move forward, move it for discussion.
Move for discussion, yes.
Move over for discussion.
Okay, Jeff?
So the planning commission didn't come up with a recommendation to change the zoning.
Right, they just forwarded it back to us, basically.
Okay, and we want to say we don't need to change the zoning. Is that what we want to say? Or what we're trying to contemplate here is...
We're contemplating whether... Go ahead, Bill.
Mr. Mayor and Council, let me just describe the process, just so everybody's on the same page, including the public. Uh, when, when you initiate any amendment of your code, and this is no different than the amendment was last considered, um, what you do under state law is you direct that to the planning commission. The planning commission then reviews the text of that amendment, makes whatever changes they want to. Then they send it back here for, uh, for you to set a public hearing. And so if, if the motion is to move forward, then you would be setting a public hearing. If the motion is not to move forward, it would end the text amendment.
Right. So if we move forward with what's in the redlined here, um, it would not be adopting it, it would just be bringing it forward for a further public hearing where both sides would have opportunity to testify.
That's right.
For or against.
Right, and that would be set at, at the planning commission again.
Right.
So even though the planning commission's looked at it, it would go back to the planning commission to conduct the public hearing.
And then Garth would have all the people again.
That's fine.
Okay, so...
Better than an empty room.
Yeah, sometimes. So I guess at this point, do we want to discuss the items in here, or do we want to, send it forward like it is?
I think we need to clear up some of the issues.
I agree. I agree. So Elizabeth, the connection to the water system, is that, that's really not part of this text amendment because that's a automatic, uh, item at this point?
Well, in the, uh, the version that we're looking at, the city version is in yellow, and looking at section seven eight, eight, seven eighty-six, there was language there because there was some discussion as to whether there should be an interim, interim use permit or a conditional use permit. And the way the, the language is written in the sample is for the council to decide or take a path, or take both, or leave both sets of language in. But the requirement for public utilities was amended in this section, and it also talked about an interim use permit.
Mr. Mayor, just a little further point on that. It's really up to the council as a legislative matter whether you want to require connection at this time, or defer it under some sort of phasing plan. Clearly, there would be a requirement for connection if and when the city extends sewer and water to that. It's about a thousand feet away, and so...
It's adjacent.
It's what?
It's currently a thousand feet away from the site. You'd have to order a public improvement project in order for it to be adjacent and therefore connect to this property, the property under discussion. So that, one of the questions that's embedded in the draft is whether you would consider this as an interim use or a conditional use, and whether you require connection to public utilities at this time or at a later time.
Okay.
Those are two items that you might want to discuss as you set this on for hearing.
Dennis, um, if you want to go over the... I know you weren't here, but I think you're aware of the, the loop system that was planned for the lower part of the city. Could you explain to council how that works?
Yeah, my understanding of the public utilities is, well, right now they end West Freeway Drive on the north side of thirty-five W. So they would need to be extended under the freeway. And also for sanitary sewer, there need to be a lift station down in that area. Can't be served by the gravity pipe that ends there today. So the sanitary sewer would run down. That would not be a loop system, you know, around.
Right.
That would be the end of that line. Water main is intended to, to loop, but I don't, I think the loop across the freeway was north of that area.
Oh, it was?
It wouldn't be a southern loop all the way. We would extend water main down to the city boundary.
So the water would be, that would be a stub at that point? Okay. So that, whether they connect or not, wouldn't interfere with the loop system?
Right, the other loop is intended to go north of the split.
Okay.
Across the freeway.
Okay. All right, um, and then as far as the conditional use or interim use, um, you know, the interim use typically are twenty years? Twenty-five years?
The longest term we have is twenty years for the billboards.
Yep. So that, that was, uh, that was put in place successfully, and we have pretty much every, everyone all allocated out. So the longest interim use that we've done?
Twenty years.
Uh, well, okay, so the conditional would be under perpetuity.
Correct.
And the interim would be really what, we could go at any point. Five years, we've done five-years ones, we've done twenty-year ones.
We've done three, five, ten, and twenty.
Okay, so, um, I know the applicant, I don't think is very interested in the IUP, but I guess it's up to the city to, you know, decide if that's something that is of interest to us, or, I mean, the, the belief is that the market forces in twenty years will drive the asphalt plant away if it's worth more as a shopping center or something, but I guess that's pretty much for us to decide right now. Mark, Danny?
I'd like to stick with the conditional use permit.
You would?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, if they're putting that much money in, almost a CUP.
Okay.
CUP.
Okay. All right, Jeff?
I don't think either, but...
Okay. That's fine. Yeah, I, I personally think the IUP would be a better deal, but, um, so, but that, I guess that's up to you guys.
Mr. Mayor, since the majority of the council is indicating CUP, we draft it that way for the hearing.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, um, was there anything else anybody saw in here that was... I know the screening was a big issue for me, whether it was screened properly. You guys have any other condition?
Yeah, I'm looking at this, uh... All the stockpiles under a roof. That, that should be not in there.
You think that's to own us?
Yeah, you... We don't, we don't have anybody else store all their stuff under a roof, so...
Well, because they're storing finished goods, and this isn't finished goods. That's the, the distinction there, so...
But the buildings would be gargantuous.
I don't know about that, but Bill, the, the distinction between indoor storage and outdoor, finished good storage and, uh, and raw goods, is that distinction that, um, we need to hold into that, into that zoning, or what do you think?
Mr. Mayor and Council, the distinction is usually drawn between light industry and heavy industry about whether the product that's stored outside, if at all, is finished goods or, um, raw material. In this district to date, the only outdoor storage that's been allowed is of finished goods. So that's, that's the distinction that's been drawn previously. I think that's why in the drafting, the suggestion was that it be enclosed. The, um, the proposer of the asphalt plant has said that's, you know, not feasible, but, you know, that's, that's a legislative decision for you to make.
Okay, so, um, Bill, if you took that out, you'd be looking at height of piles, or how would you want to regulate the...
Well, that's already regulated in the height of piles of fifty feet. Stockpiles should not exceed fifty feet, which is just above it in height. And they, and their proposals are to, uh, with the screening, you know, they've got, we've got drawings out of the screening as everything's gonna go trees and...
Yeah, I actually went down and looked at it, and there, there's actually quite an opportunity to keep existing screening, um, which I believe they were interested in doing so.
And the backside of the piles are gonna be, are all gonna be planted, so there'll be a continuation of the berms or whatever.
Okay. Jeff, any concerns you had on the wording in the amendment?
How do you screen a asphalt plant? That's what I'm wondering from the road. Doesn't seem like you can, but, you know, you know what my thoughts are. I'm against the asphalt plant, so...
Yeah, well, I mean, if you... The cement plant is not screened at all, but it's enclosed. So, I mean, when they first put up the tank, it was a big old rusty tank, it looked like that.
I remember that.
And they enclosed it, and I think it looks great now, but, um... Okay.
That's in a different district, different zoning now.
It is, that's in the twenty-three. Mark?
Well, mine's already addressed, that's the issue I had. I'm gonna read through these.
The which one?
The enclosure, I didn't approve of that, so...
Okay. All right, Danny?
Agree with Bill.
Okay, just open piles?
Open piles, yes.
Okay. All right.
So, Mr. Mayor, would we strike that provision then from the hearing?
Sounds like that's a consensus, so, I mean, we just, we want to get this as close as possible to, to the public, so... Okay? I, I think there could be some sort of enclosures. I know MINDOT does it, and, um, cities do it, we do it with hoop buildings and other areas, but if you guys don't think so... All right, um, anything else anybody has to add?
Are we gonna address the sewer, uh, sewer, or we're gonna let it later?
I, I don't know as if there's anything to address, right, Bill? Because that's part of our normal process.
Right, Mr. Mayor and Council, it's, it's written such that in order to forego the connection at this date, under a CUP, they would have to give you a firm phasing plan when, when it might be connected in a development agreement. So you might give them ten years, you might give them twenty years, but ultimately you're not taking them off the hook for a connection if you decide to extend sewer and water. So you decide to extend sewer and water, they'd have to connect to it like everybody else. But if it's not, if it's not feasible because people aren't petitioning for it, or it's not cost-effective to extend it, then there may never be a connection. So it's written in that way, uh, call it permissive, uh, but still with you having the ultimate decision-making authority. You are a later council. That's, that's the draft. So the question is, do you want the draft to continue as is? And, and keep in mind that just because it's going to hearing, just because you set it on...
Yeah, we're not adopting it.
This is not the final adoption tonight. So you'll have latitude once you hear that testimony if you want to make changes or not adopt it at all.
Okay.
So you're not making a final decision tonight.
Right, and keep in mind, this is asphalt slash concrete production facility, so...
Yes.
But I think, is the, the concrete part of it, the facility's gonna be eliminated, correct?
I don't know, I mean, I'm just saying, this would, if, if that wasn't, the way this thing is proposed now, if that was a concrete plant, it would prohibit another asphalt plant within five miles. Right? Because it's one or the other. It's five miles, or no, was it five, or?
It's, uh, two miles.
Two, two miles. Yeah. Okay, so with that in mind, uh...
So what about the, what about the traffic management part? I mean, they've already agreed to not run any trucks during running ACE's scheduled horse racing, the racing nights. So, I mean, right here we have this traffic management plan, and, you know, there's something else in here about outdoor concerts and stuff, and, I don't know, so...
Your point? Your point is, is that it's too broad, you're thinking?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I, I understand the, the race horse, horse racing nights.
Yep.
I agree with that, and, and the...
Okay.
They've agreed not to run the trucks during the racing.
I think what Bill's trying to specify is what constitutes a concert.
Yeah.
Could it be a one guy with a banjo out there, or a mega band playing?
Right.
They're both a concert technically.
I, I believe we have to give permission for those, although...
You guys are gonna speak up, so people can hear you. I can, I can be heard all the way through the building. I can't hear you for shit. Speak up.
Okay, please keep your profanity to a minimum there. We'll speak up the best we can. Sorry, the room isn't suitable for you. So, Bill, um, if we, uh, if we call it a concert, I think we can look at that later as what, what that is. I don't think we have to do anything with it now. All right, so at this point, I guess I entertain a motion to, uh, to move this forward to public hearing, or, or not?
I think make a motion, move it forward to public hearing.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? You know, Bill seconded it.
We did, okay, sir.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so the ayes have it. So, Elizabeth, you have a date on that?
At this point, um, the earliest date it could be is November first.
November first? November first it is. Okay. All right, moving on to the accessory building text amendment?
Yeah, that was a motion on also for approval.
Okay. And, uh, is there any discussion on that?
Was there any discussion? No, it was...
All right, if, if you guys can't keep it down, it's hard to hear in this room, you'll have to leave, so... Yes, there is, November first. Yes, sir.
So the accessory building? Conex containers?
Yep.
November date, November first is the planning commission, and none of your intention to do it?
Yes. Yes. All right, you don't have to yell over these guys.
So, uh, there was really no discussion?
Okay. So you guys have any, uh, thing to add to the text amendment, or, no, I'm sorry, to the, uh...
The accessory building?
The Conex boxes?
Yeah.
I think we got it pretty hammered, Owen.
It took a while. What page is that on?
It's on page, uh... All right, look...
It was clarification in the wordings.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we're gonna wait here.
Two-minute recess.
Yes, and it's over the, Jeff had some questions on that. It's over five acres, I believe.
Not, not at this time, it's a public hearing, public open forum, you can. At the public open forum, you can.
Is the city okay with them putting the signs on the city property?
No, they can't do that. Please take those down. All right, Garth, let's go for it.
Okay, so kind of the Conex containers, it was a four-to-one approval.
Four-to-one approval. Who was abstainer? You, you're against?
I didn't like the idea that I couldn't alter my personal property.
Couldn't alter it, what do you mean?
Uh, there's a line in there that says that you can have a Conex container, but you cannot alter it. It has to maintain its original, the way it left the factory.
Oh, you can't put a roof on it?
Yeah, you can't improve it.
You can't ruin it?
Can't make it nicer.
You want to do that?
I want to make one nicer, yeah.
Okay.
I think our intent on that day was, because we didn't want them welded together and be put two of them become one. I think that we didn't...
Well, we don't, we don't care about that, but if you, say you get one, and you want to make it unique, and invest money into it, and make it improved, you can't do that now. So we've gone full circle from...
Yeah, why can't...
The big hand of government restricting...
Put windows in them and siding and... Never thought about it.
Exactly.
No, they can't.
I, I wouldn't, I don't know where that came from. Who came up with that?
I don't either.
Because we didn't give you that direction.
But it was in there, so I didn't like it.
Where is it at in the, in it?
It's in your verbiage or in the... I'm looking, I can't...
I still think, because we didn't want to modify to come, two, make them into one because it was a technical deal, it was nothing to do with making them cosmetically better. I agree with you, we should be able to do that. Put it back again?
Uh, well, we can just change it now. I mean, I, I'm not for it at all, so I, I mean, I'm gonna vote against it.
Conex boxes?
No.
You change your mind?
No, I mean, I'm not for, I'm not for limiting...
Limiting what?
Limiting the numbers or anything, I think they're fine. I, I don't think we even need this amendment.
There you go.
I don't know about that, but I, I'm in the minority, so...
Mr. Mayor, could you explain that to me? I'm confused.
Well, I don't, I don't think, I think the, the amendment, the text amendment here is, uh, overreaching for large parcels. And I think the one per hundred and sixty acres is silly. And Jeff threw that in there, uh, and everybody was okay with that, but I, I really believe it needed to be, um...
Will you interrupt her?
Sure.
...discussion of this amendment?
Sure.
Would you look at the notice and, and, and for the hearing?
Yep.
Actually better for the planning commission's work and the city's work if the hearing is held on fifteen, and then come back to the council on one or twenty is...
Okay.
If you're willing to make that.
Motion maker made, who made the motion? If you guys could keep it down, please. Close that back door if we can't stop the talking back there.
Mr. Mayor, if you're gonna make an announcement, so they can at least hear that we made a change.
Okay, so to the fifteenth? So the, the public hearing will be on the fifteenth, not the first?
Oh, my God.
Fifteenth, yes? Correct. Yeah, we had, we had an issue with the timing, so we're... Okay, well, you know what? It'll be posted. Okay. Yes, the press is here, so... Please, no, no more outbursts. If you guys close the doors and talk outside, or, or come in here and be quiet. It's all right, we've been called worse.
Atlanta Lake's finest.
Even today, huh?
Yeah. All right, so, yeah, so I'm, I'm not for the, the minimizing...
You want to change the number on the higher properties, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I did, and...
At what, at what stage? Or what acreage?
You know, under, under two...
Because I know that's...
Under two acres? Under two acres? I, I don't know if you should have one.
Under five.
Oh, even under five, I don't know if you should even have one.
We're just gonna talk about the, about the acreage higher up, so at what point...
Well, I, I think it, it's like...
Thirty acres, twenty acres?
Twenty.
Twenties?
That's agricultural.
Huh? Twenties, yeah, what, Elizabeth? The agricultural limit is twenty, or ten?
Uh, over ten.
Over ten. So I'd say over ten, it doesn't matter.
Well, how many you think you want to put on a ten-acre lot?
I don't know, it's agriculture, we'll leave that alone. I mean, I, I don't think these rules should even apply to that. I mean, if you, if you have the two-acre lot, a one-acre lot, I, I don't know if you should have one. I agree with you, Bill, because their eyesores are close together, and it's impossible to screen.
But I, I still think if you got a ten, I still think not putting something there...
I, I think any, I agree with you...
I disagree with you on the higher part.
Yeah, and I agree with you on the low end where they shouldn't be on the property line, because right now you could park one right on the property line, and nobody could say anything, because it's private property. I think it should be, have a setback from the property line, it should have, uh, screening if it's at the property line, but at, at a hundred, a hundred and twenty acres, I mean, you're gonna park one somewhere in the middle, who cares? I mean, it, as, uh, people testified, they're, they keep bugs out, and they keep mice out, they store grain in them, they store, who knows what they store in them, things that they don't need very often, so...
I agree with you partially on that, Dave, but what if the person put them fifty feet off the property line and lined them up? You know what I'm saying?
You mean, like on a hundred and sixty acres, they just put one on them?
Well, if you had a hundred and sixty acres, you had all swampy, you had highland, you put a bunch of them there, and then neighbors got five acres next to it, you've got to look at them. I kind of, I get what you're saying, but there's, people are gonna take advantage of this system. I think that's why we're talking about that.
Well, I think, I think the concerns have been about these smaller acres, acreage, because they're impossible to screen. And we allowed them to build a bigger building, they should build a bigger building. I agree with, with that, Bill.
We talk about accessory buildings. If you allow two, three, four, five Conex boxes, they should just build an accessory building. I, I think one is all we should allow, that's, that's my thought, and that's why I said it traditionally, but...
Well, I mean, we have one guy that testified that has a farm, that uses a few of them to store stuff, his whatever, grains, whatever, because they're locktied.
Yep.
And he's got them, he's got them, he's grandfathered in, basically.
And I'm okay with that, but I'm wrestling with the fact of ten acres having eight of them sitting there. I agree with Jeff, when you, now if they're five grand apiece, you got five of them there, that's twenty-five thousand bucks, now you can put a building up, or get a nice one started. I'm just saying. I don't know, I, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
I mean, I want to come to it.
Because if they have the Conex boxes now, they're allowed to keep them.
So they are.
This is from here on, if they don't have them by now, they don't need them. I mean, it's, they've been there a long time. Hundred-acre properties, they owned them for a long time. So I think we should leave it at as is. Except, you know, change with the, change in the box itself, I can do that. Don't put windows or something in it.
Yeah, and this is just another law that's gonna be impossible to enforce. It's gonna be impossible to, and there's gonna be the people that are gonna do it that we would never even know, because they're in the middle of a hundred and sixty acres. How would you know? What are you gonna go, we're not active, proactive on the policing of this thing, so...
Doesn't the screening part cover even your situation? I mean, they have to be screened or...
Yeah. Yeah, I'm saying they would have to be screened, even if you had a hundred and sixty acres.
Yeah, so wouldn't that protect the guy in the five acres adjoining the hundred acres that's got to look at ten of these fifty feet off if they're all screened?
It would.
They're hidden, you know?
It would.
Or improved.
Right, um... So, you know, I, maybe we move it to, I don't know, to say, I, I just would never vote for it, knowing that with one on 160 acres is just a silly thing.
How many 160-acre plots we have out there?
Quite a few.
That would be four, 'cause it would be four 40s, so each 40 is an individual lot, so you would have-
Not if it's one PID.
Oh, you think, you think people have done that?
I don't know, I mean, that's enough, that goes to another, another question, is, is contiguous-owned PIDs considered your acreage, or is it the PID that the thing is sitting on?
Well, both.
If I own four houses in a row, and you add them all up and go, you'll get one, or do you go, well, I get one for each PID I have?
I, I thought the language was, you got one Connex box per lot, so, say, if you owned three lots, you would get three.
Okay.
Is that, not the intention?
I, I don't know, is that how you guys interpret?
That's not what I interpreted.
No, I interpreted as-
One it.
One address, one Connex box?
Yeah, is it per address, or is it per property?
I'm just asking, 'cause I'm the one that, that'm gonna have to interpret it, so I just wanna make, clarify what, what we're talking about.
So, what do you do about, and we talked about this before, we get to new development, where some of those lots are two acres, and some of them are nine acres, 11 acres, and the houses are-
You mean these half a million dollar houses that are stacked next to each other with a Connex box, looking at a Connex box?
Let's not beteena it, like the old chicken bar. Under egg, does this even, does this even apply?
Well, if a farmer had, yeah, that's a good question, Bill, under egg, does this apply? It's personal property regulation.
Generally, um, the right to farm statute allows for agricultural buildings, I don't know if a Connex box is considered that, so-
How about a corn silo?
Yeah.
Or grain bin?
Yep.
Big water tank, I don't know.
All of those are allowed.
So, a Connex box is, if you put corn in a Connex box, is that, now, not a Connex box, is that exempt by the egg rule?
I'd have to look at that and see where the line is, but generally, um, farm operations get a lot of latitude in this state for structures and buildings needed in farming, the question would be, can you make the argument that the Connex, Connex box is necessary?
Okay, well, I'd like to see, um, it moved to, like, under two, under two and a half acres, none, and, uh, over that, they have to be screened, maybe under 10, no, under five, none, five and over, one, if it's screened, and then 10 and up, it's not regulated, but has to be screened. That's kinda how I'm looking at it, I don't know.
Well, we looked at that before, but if you look under B here, Dave, restriction to chapter size, placement of lot, accessory building shall not apply to any parcel 20 acres or larger, is classified as agricultural land for tax purposes and is used for agricultural purposes, so doesn't that exclude that one?
Which one was that, 1A?
B.
H38.
1A, section B. Section 1B.
Yeah, I guess that would, I mean, over 20.
Yep. So, I still like our five acres, under five acres, you get absolutely none, I mean, I thought we came to consensus on that, um, if you're egg, and you got more than 20 acres, then, you know, get a bunch of them.
But then they don't even need to be screened?
Well, that I don't agree with, but I guess it's not placed in there, is it?
No.
Then we probably could change the wording on that.
Well, I just shot myself in the foot there, didn't I?
Dave, you thought he was helping.
Maybe the 20 acres are agricultural, that they, um, you know, they still have to maintain the screening process.
But then 10 is actually agricultural.
Okay.
So, maybe that should be 10.
No, I would like to leave it 20.
Okay.
And is it five or more acres, or over five acres?
No, five or more, so if you have under five, five acres or under-
And I'd like to lower that, I'd like 4.75, because there's gonna be those guys that are really close, you know, 4.9, and they're gonna be, but, that's, that's how I would do it, if it was a-
You're getting really nitpicky now, you know that?
No, I'm just saying, I mean, there are people, there's a lot of lots, that just didn't quite make it, 'cause of their one foot short, so-
Well, let's change it, then, move on.
Okay, so, um, which change you wanna go with?
Well, we got the 20 or more already down, we're gonna have to change that.
That's good. So-
You can say 4.75 acres?
Yeah, I'd like to see that, where's it, where's it say five, what page is that?
It's on page, uh, 41.
Okay.
Well, five acres or more. All right.
Okay, so-
Get the 4.75?
Yep.
What's the change, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, page 41, uh, K5 to 4.75.
So, something like, 4.75 acres or more?
Correct.
Well, there's just a lot of five acres, it really are five acres.
It's close, you know?
Okay.
Garth, what section were you talking about, about modifying them, to make them look better? Where was that in here?
I don't have it in front of me, but there was a section that said you couldn't modify it, it had to remain as it was when it left the factory, or something like that.
Hmm.
Just take that out and, uh-
No altering.
The one that says the container must be in the same position as it left the factory?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that would be number four, on page, um, 41.
I think I agree with Garth, I think you should be able to cut windows in and dress them up.
I think we strike number four, well, no, except for the no container, stack, I think we keep that, right?
Right.
Keep that.
Strike the rest, you got that, Bill?
But leave the, but leave the stacking thing in there, correct?
Okay, and we have our, our no signage?
I have got one thing I'd like to question on.
Just a second, Denny, where was the no signs or no advertising, was that in here or not?
It is, it's gotta be painted, or-
Pretty shirts on there, isn't it? It was a long night.
It doesn't, I mean, I know it's in our sign ordinance, or it's in our, what is it, what ordinance, is that in already?
It's, um, pretty, it's in the, it's in the sign ordinance that you can't use a, um, an object, you know, you mean like a semi-trailer, or-
As advertising.
As advertising.
Right.
So, isn't there somewhere in here where it says that the building has to match the house, or whatever the case may be, painted to match the house? Somewhere along here, isn't it?
That's, uh, for accessory buildings, not for Connex boxes.
Well, so, an orange Connex box in the backyard.
Yeah, where was that, that, I thought we talked, we had it be natural colors and-
Right.
Yeah.
On page 39, it says, "The proposed accessory building, same or similar style and color", that's what the accessory building says.
The Connex, it's on page 40, K1.
Thanks.
Thanks, Paul.
Nobody's paying attention.
No logos or advertising.
Okay, so that's there, we talked about that.
Same or similar color with the dwelling, so there it is, right there.
Yeah, can't be orange, well, maybe their house is orange.
Can't be orange, can't be green.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe we can put her a neutral color, or, or, uh-
What says here to match the dwelling?
Yeah, I see that, but if you got a white house, I mean, those white, white Connex boxes stand out, sun hits them.
It's the same or similar, I mean, you got a white house.
Garth has one, and it's white, he'll have windows in it, it'll look nice, right, Garth?
I'll say, maybe 80% brick and mortar, too, 35% some.
There you go.
Now, on, on page, uh, Danny, you had something?
On page 41, number six, "You'll place container on non-dugable slab or foundation."
Yep.
Has to be six inches off ground, I don't think that should be, 'cause that's just a place for varmints to be.
No, but if you don't, the containers rot, because the, the frost, when it comes out, it just tears them apart, they have to be, anybody who sells you one of those will tell you it has to be off the ground-
Okay.
For, for, for the cooling.
The one I bought, they set it on the ground, so that's the best place to set it.
Did it rot?
No, not yet, it's only been two years.
Okay, it will.
Maybe that's it.
Isn't that where the three-legged fox had her babies?
No, it's on the other shed.
Oh.
All right, on page 41, number L, um, you guys realize that's gonna really be problematic?
Which one?
Well, it talks about, "Accessory structures constructed with fabric, plastic, or vinyl shall be gated entirely behind the principal residence," I mean, we have a ton of people with hoop buildings, carports in front of their house.
They should be to the side.
But they, they are now, I mean, there's-
Those that continue as, as grandfather.
Okay.
But keep putting them up, if nothing's done about it, so this is doing something about it.
Okay. All right. Any other concerns on it?
Nope.
Paul?
Uh, if you guys are taking out the thing, if you can't modify it, I ask if you consider putting in width restrictions, so if you can't get people welding two of them together, call it.
Yeah, that's, that's fair, um-
I'll change the dimensions in your, uh-
Footprint?
Yeah.
I mean, if somebody wants to put a roof on it-
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, but changing the footprint of it, so-
Doubling them up and calling it one.
Right, you got that, Bill?
Yeah.
Good.
Just one, one thing here, is, is are we going to allow any number on 20 acres or more?
It, it, that's what it says, if it's, if it's agricultural use, I don't know who has 20 acres that's not, I mean, most people who have 20 acres, it would be agricultural.
No screening required either? You wanna say anything about that?
You know, it's not a problem, I don't know why it would be, I mean, if you're backing up to a farm, you're expecting to see farm stuff.
Except for the guy that 20 acres might be next to the guy with five acres, and now you got the Connex box next to the property line, I mean, there's a lot of that, you know what I'm saying?
Wouldn't call it 20 acres a farm either, but-
Yeah, I wouldn't either, but they do, they try to.
They call it a hobby farm.
They should be screened.
I think so.
Oh, you think?
Well, that's what I'm saying, if a farmer could put a bunch of them right along the property line, if they have screens.
Yeah, let's keep the screening on it.
Put them in the middle, they're screened anyway, but if they put them somewhere visible, then they gotta be screened.
Well, if they're in the middle of a 40-acre field, what are you gonna do?
Well, yeah, okay, it's gotta be screened.
I mean, I'd be, I mean, I, I think the thing we should really consider is the, you can't park them closer than the setback, I mean, you can't have them closer than 20 feet, right, from a, you couldn't put a building 20 feet, feet.
I thought we had 50 feet in here.
Yeah, I think this has got a different setback on it.
This is additional.
50?
50 feet.
50 feet, and screened.
Screened, I hear screened on there?
And 50 feet.
This is for the normal, everybody under, so-
No container shall be, it's on number three, on page 41. I don't know what's wrong with the signal, I'm just losing it every other time.
50 feet, but it doesn't say except for agricultural, so, Bill?
It doesn't have to, the state law would grant.
This would, this would override?
State law would override this ordinance, we don't have to make separate regulations for egg.
But we want to, that's what Bill is saying, he wants to.
Oh, well, if you want to, that's-
Right, I mean, you want, or Mark is saying that you want to, you wanna say, even if you're egg, you gotta be 50 feet away?
Yeah, and screened, I'm sorry, but, you know, I, if there's 50 feet, and you're not screening off the property line, what's the difference if somebody's not egg, and they're 50 feet and not screened, I mean, you're still looking at it.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose if you have that much land, you should probably put it somewhere else.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Like some other people do, and it works out good.
Right, all right, I guess that'll be how that works, at 50 feet and-
Screened.
Well, how about or, I mean, no closer than, if it's screened and it's 20 feet away, what's the difference, right, it's not gonna create a watershed problem, right, and if it's, uh, so I don't know why you would need the 50 feet in the screening.
Oh, just screened then, is that what you want?
Yeah, no closer than 20, you can't put it on the property line, like you can't any other building, and screened.
Screened is a big thing.
So, uh, Mr. Griffith, where would we add that, that would be?
That would be in B. No container shall be located less than 20 feet?
K3.
Well, no, I think we, we were talking about on the agric, on the 20 and greater, 'cause it's really, it's really hard to understand which, where the 20, you can have more with section 1B, if you're 20 acres or larger, but it, it's, it's kind of, uh, confusing on where you can have it.
Why is it confusing?
Well, because, 'cause B is, is saying that you can have 20 of them-
It doesn't get nothing about the feet, though, 50 feet is 50 feet.
Accessory buildings now, or the Connex?
The Connex box.
Okay, so we have separate regulations for Connex in K, right?
Yep.
Separate from accessory buildings, and you can't have those Connex boxes closer than 50 feet, is the way it's written, and that would apply-
But, but if you read B, it says, "Restrictions in this chapter in this, on the size and placement of the lot of accessory buildings shall not apply, uh, on any parcel of 20 acres or larger, classified as agricultural," so it's saying the whole thing doesn't apply if you're there, so therefore, K3 wouldn't apply.
If you treat Connex boxes as accessory buildings, but we don't, we, we treat them as a, a separate category in K of containers.
I think they did that, Dave, because they don't meet the requirements in accessory building, that's why they had their own section, so-
And we can clarify that if you want, but the, the intent is to not treat this as an accessory building.
An accessory building should be permitted, taxed, and all that stuff, and this is not, so that's why it has its own separate entity.
Yeah, the definition of accessory building has certain foundation standards, certain construction methods-
Right.
These you couldn't build, you know, they're not an accessory building.
So, I think keep the 50 feet and have it buffered.
Okay, you guys-
Back to 50?
50 and screened.
But, I, I think it should be or.
50?
50, what, no, 50 feet and or, so, no, it should be 20 or, because if, if it's screened and it's 20 feet away, it's not harming the neighbor, so I don't know what 50 does for you.
Okay.
Right, it could be 21 feet, or it could be 100 feet, it's screened, why do we need to say 50? Why do we need to say fifty?
So, you want to say fifty feet and less screened, and then in which case it would be twenty?
Yes.
I think it needs to be screened at fifty.
No, I'm saying screened at fifty, screened at twenty. It doesn't make any sense. I think you should change the fifty to twenty, because you're saying it's an and in there, right?
Don't have any feet, then. Just say screened.
Right. Well, no, because you don't want to put it on the property line.
You can't. It's screened. But...
No, if you're, if you have a big fence, the issue with them is water runs off them, right? It could create a watershed issue. So, that's where the twenty feet comes for. So, I'd say twenty feet. If, because it's, because it has to be screened.
Okay. Is that consensus?
What was you guys thinking? If it's screened, what's the difference if it's twenty, twenty-one, fifty, a hundred?
We'll twenty if it's fully, you know, screened eighty percent.
Okay.
And that's the provision, the fire provision on K addresses the screening.
Okay.
Okay, twenty it is?
Yep. All right, any other changes, modifications? Almost done here, Garth. Nope. Okay, entertain a motion to accept or deny of this ordinance number... Oh, call for a hearing. That's right. Call for a hearing on ordinance number, did you give it an order? Not yet. Not till we approve it. Okay, I entertain a motion to call for a hearing on this text amendment.
So moved. Second.
Okay.
On the text amendment, no, on the...
The text, it's a text amended for the accessory building.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yes. It's a text amendment for both, so... Second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both. Ayes have it. When will that one be, Elizabeth?
That one will be November first.
That one will be November first. Okay. So, there's gonna be a lot of people here for that by accident. Okay, Garth, what else you got?
I can boost every part.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No, what about the...
Rest are all mine.
The rest are all yours? Okay, go ahead.
In your agenda packets, you have a final plat for Asman addition. The staff has reviewed this plat, and the applicant has fulfilled all of the requirements, so we are recommending approval for the Asmath final plat.
Okay. Questions on that?
Nope.
Motion to approve or deny?
So moved.
Approve or deny?
Approve.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, both. Ayes have it. Okay, the next one?
The next one is as a resolution. We, Priner Preserve has made an application for a plat two. In that plat, if you recall, that was where we had thirty detached townhomes. And there are some potential buyers that would like to have bigger lots, and so they would like to convert three lots into two lots. And in order to do that, they need to vacate drainage and utility easements on Lot fourteen. And so what you have before you is a resolution calling a hearing for those drainage and utility easements.
Okay. Any concerns on that? I entertain a motion to approve or deny the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Further discussion?
That hearing will be on November eighth.
November eighth. Resolution number?
Is the MinDOT master contract agreement, that's resolution seventeen thirty-four, so this resolution would be seventeen thirty-five.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both. Ayes have it. Okay. That's that. Anything else, Elizabeth?
I have nothing further under the planning commission report.
Okay. Public open forum, if there's someone here for a public open forum. Now is the time to come up?
Can we speak on the mayor of the asphalt plant?
We have a public hearing coming, so that'd be the time for that. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Lynn Carver Quinn, seventy-five forty, one hundred and fifty-second lane northeast. I came to tell you that Mark, after the last meeting I spoke at, Mark came and talked to me, so I did do my homework. You know, instead of going to the asphalt plant, because they're gonna tell me it's great, I actually went and talked to a couple of the truckers that drive for them. So, I just want to give you a little insight. They're a very reputable company. Every trucker I talked to...
I don't want to cut you off, but we're gonna have this public hearing on this stuff, so...
Okay, so then I want to go to your comprehensive plan.
Okay, perfect.
You have a comprehensive plan there, and it does not include it. So, you have the unique ability right now of developing this city, and you have industrial on Lake Drive with Semstone and Waldock, and so it looks like popcorn to me. I did spend fifteen years on a planning commission, and you don't go through a comprehensive plan and then start changing it. I run a six-figure business, and I, a lot of my meetings are at coffee shops, and I have to go outside of Columbus. You know, people in the city want to go to dinner. They have, they have running aces, or they go outside of the city. So, with the property that you own, go out and get them. I have to go out and find people and ask people. You can't just put a sign up, "Call me." There's some restaurants talking with Forest Lake. There's a coffee shop. Go to them, and you are in the driver's seat. The property doesn't do us any good if we just own it. And how long you own it, so go out and actually bring something that's gonna enhance for the people of this community to go to and patronize. And kind of stick to your comprehensive plan, because that's what you did it for. And get that going, because that's what people want. They don't want things changing just because somebody wants to do something. So, I just want to encourage you to kind of stick to that and go out and find people to, you know, I run a business. I can't just post on Facebook. I have to ask people if they want to buy. So, go out and fill that land, because it doesn't do us any good sitting there empty.
We do do that.
Well, how would I see your signs saying "call," and I'm not one to call. I'm one to go out and ask people to come to our community and give the people something where they can spend their money here, instead of going outside of the city.
We've been doing both. The signs have helped with people calling. We are actively looking, and we've all had people that we know and companies that we've looked at. I mean, the reality is, is as a lot of people have said, the, once the bridge is done, which will be done in a couple of years, it, there'll be lots of development, and it'll be a different, a different landscape.
Okay. Secure them, because that's what people are looking, when I talk to people, that's what they're looking for, someplace they can go in the community and spend their money, instead of going outside of the city.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else for public open forum? Not about the asphalt plant?
Dan Mike, one five one two-three Hornsby Street. I just want to follow up on our traffic control device on Hornsby.
If, yeah, that'll be addressed by Dennis in his report.
We just had another wreck there tonight. So, that's a second in six weeks.
I saw emergency vehicles east of the intersection.
It was right there. Again, that's a second one in six weeks.
We're talking about it in one of the engineering items.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. All right, anyone else? Oh, Ron.
Ron Hanigraff, ninety-two twenty-two, one hundred and eighty-first Columbus. Been here forty years. And is there a possible way not to have this meeting here on the fifteenth in this room when you can't hear? Is it possible to put it in a school, or a church, or the fire hall? Because it was so crowded tonight.
Yeah.
I couldn't understand what any of you said.
I think if we did, I mean, we've been looking at fixing, we have a, the, the, LATV has a bunch of money reserved for, through our PAG fees, for improving our audio and visual system, which should have been done by now, but it's not. But it is coming. So, that would help. Maybe by that time, we could work on the audio. I agree. It's horrible, and then people start murmuring and humbling and shuffling their feet, and we can't even hear ourselves, so...
Well, the idea of having a public hearing, and, well, I have people repeating themselves if they can't hear what the last guy said.
Yeah.
I just, today, tonight, I was just shocked when I came in. There was people...
Yeah.
Twenty, thirty feet out. And I didn't even know what their, you know, what their issue was. I mean, I know what the issue is.
Yeah, I don't know. Elizabeth, could we hold it in the public works building?
You know, in the, I don't think we have enough chair, you know, chairs, but in the past, when we've had...
I got enough.
A large, a large group, we've, I know we've held it at the school in the auditorium where you can, you know, seat and have audio, so you are able to have it at a, you know, a different location, as long as it's public.
Posted.
Posted, that that's where you're going to, you know, mean, hold it.
Yeah.
Well, I just, it's just a suggestion.
Yeah, no, it's a good suggestion. It is a problem, and no matter what I say, people murmur and make noise.
It's a big issue, and I think it's so big that I think I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.
Yeah, I really want the public, I mean, I ain't necessarily for it or against it, but I want the public hearing to happen so that both sides can vet out what's really gonna be there. That's kind of my goal.
Better than yelling.
It's better than yelling.
I mean, at least everybody gets their chance to get up and talk.
Right. Using profanity. Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else for public open year, open forum? All right. Hearing nothing, we'll move on to the engineer's report.
Nope.
Oh, wait, oh, wait, wait. Oh, yeah, that one. Page forty-five. We don't want to get Bill out of water here yet.
Interesting letter.
Isn't it? It's basically, we're doing, I don't know, can you put that up on the screen there, Elizabeth? It's basically a response to the letter that you guys had me send that basically says, yeah, we agree with you, but we were doing what we ought to do. Sorry. Go, go talk to your legislators.
You understand that pretty well. That's what it says on it. The short version, that's what it says.
Yeah, that's what it says.
It's lawyer talk here.
Yeah, there's a bunch of fluff in there, but basically, yeah, we get it, but we're doing our job, just, so...
I'm surprised they even wrote the letter back.
I think we're obliged to, weren't they?
I think that's good practice. I don't know that they're obligated to respond, but it's good practice. It was also copied to every senator and representative, and that was shown on our CC, so...
It's probably...
I think they were interested in having a response that was reasonable.
Right.
Sounded reasonable, and in the public record.
So, what does that, what does that leave us, Bill? Do we have a, what's our next push on this? Because I don't agree with what they're doing here.
So, I think Elizabeth and I talked about it. I think the next step would be, you always have an opportunity with your delegation, your legislative delegation, they usually come in here before the session.
Yeah, but we also have the legal, legal side of the third branch.
Sure.
Can't we just file an appeal? Say, we, we, because, because when, when the bureaucrats interpret the code, they're using their own interpretation that is regulated by the judicial branch. So, they can say, they can say that the legislature said this, but if that's not really what they said, that's where the judicial branch comes in. Can't we just file an appeal to say, we want you to refund this a hundred dollars that's been paid, and tell them that they're not in compliance with the intent of the law?
Mr. Mayor and Council, the, what you're asking for is what's called a declaratory judgment.
Yep, let's ask for one.
To declare the meaning of the law. It would be a fairly expensive proposition, and there's no certainty that they would agree with you. They'd probably give deference to the campaign finance board's interpretation of the statutes. I would, I would think that a legislative fix would be a better fix, perhaps working with the League of Minnesota Cities, your delegation. And there is a little bit of, I don't know if I'd call it an olive branch, but there's a little bit of a opening to have a conversation even with the campaign finance board. Sounds like they, in part, agree with you. So, before you would spend money in litigation, I think you'd want to exhaust those efforts that are maybe less expensive and more on point with the legislation. But that's certainly your call. If you tell us to, you know, go file a declaratory judgment action, we'll go do that for you. It's not something that would be covered by the league. You have insurance for if someone sues you on a land use approval. You have...
Are we talking a couple thousand dollars? Five thousand, ten thousand?
More than that.
So... Danny, views?
They have a meeting with them. They haven't come out and talked to us about it, you know. They've, they've put, what they've said in this letter is basically what the guy told me when I was on the committee two years ago. He said, "Fill out the papers. Don't discourage, don't put nothing down you don't want to put down, and we'll let it go slide by."
Well, that in itself is criminal, I think.
Well, that's, yeah, but basically what the guy said.
However, my, my deal was to the contrary.
It got stricter when I was, when Bill took over. I had to pay a fine for sixty days or thirty days that I wasn't, didn't disclose that I was there.
So, this is why you guys wanted somebody else to take it, and I'm glad I didn't step in the mess.
Yeah, I see.
Well, I, and I get, the three hundred got reduced, but then they sent me a letter for the initial hundred, and I sent another letter back saying I didn't, wasn't gonna pay that, and I didn't think I had to, whatever, blah, blah, blah. And I haven't seen any response, and that's probably been three, four weeks. Usually it comes here, why did they mail it here? Why don't they mail it to my house?
I don't know, for the people that are out here that don't understand what we're talking about, we need representation on the watersheds. And to have that representation, the person we send is obliged to inform the watershed of every, what was it, every...
Well, it's like...
Every account you have, every person you do business with.
Every piece of prop you had, everything that you had.
Basically, a...
Investments and everything.
Total financial disclosure, and we believe that's onus, and because Mr. Krebs didn't fill out everything, you didn't turn it in at all.
Well, I, yeah, I turned in something, but, you know...
They weren't happy with it.
They weren't happy with it, and then they went from a hundred to three hundred and...
So, they started racking up the fines?
Yes, and so then I resigned from the deal, but it, it's farther than just your personal financial. They want to know your business. They want to know all the people you do business with, your customer. I mean, it's just...
Yeah, and that all becomes public record.
And if I could just read the paragraphs, because I think there's some agreement here. The concern that the economic interest disclosure provided by public officials is not always appropriate is shared by members of the campaign finance and public disclosure board. The board is considering a change to its administrative rules that would end disclosure of some types of securities that could never be the source of a possible conflict. There's also been discussion of reducing the economic interest disclosure required by the organizations, similar to the request the city has made. That type of change would take legislative action. So, in my experience, if they weren't interested in a change, they wouldn't have put those couple of paragraphs in. So, I think they're signaling at least some interest in a change. So, perhaps you and others can kind of tip the balance toward positive legislative change. And we would do that maybe by having a forum here, or in some other place. Maybe we coordinate with the League of Minnesota Cities.
I mean, would we just, could simply get our senator to sponsor a bill, or?
Yes. That would be, that would be the most, I think, effective way to do it, is, is say, you know, we would contact the League of Minnesota Cities, tell them that we're interested, send them this letter, tell them we're interested in the changes, and then we would sponsor legislation and have our legislators submit it for us.
Okay, so that's a way to fix the future problem. What are we gonna do about the current problem? I don't believe that, I believe this is onus to overly onus, and, and Mr. Krebs shouldn't be paying the hundred dollars. I wouldn't pay the hundred dollars. I'd wait till they put me in handcuffs, but, no, yeah, I know, but I mean, what, what are your plans?
I wrote the letter. I'm waiting for them to send me back a letter on the last remaining hundred bucks.
You sent them money already?
No, I haven't sent anything.
You plan on sending them money?
No.
I think that's, that's the route to go, is he take that to its natural conclusion, whether they accept Mr. Krebs' position.
The natural conclusion is they arrest them.
Well, no, the next, the next...
Right?
The next letter will constitute my attorney writing them a letter, and I'll just pay him, because it's ridiculous.
It is ridiculous.
It is, so, I mean, it's...
Your attorney shouldn't have to write a letter either.
Well, if it gets to that, he will. It's principle, so...
No, I, I think that consensus here is the board agrees with you, and I don't believe you should have to pay it, and I don't believe Danny should. Did you pay your bill, too?
I paid a small fine just to blow it away. Take it gone. Bribery.
And the reality is, is now we're sitting with no representation, and they get to spend money, and we have no input. They get to tax our four thousand residents, and we have nobody there representing us.
And that, and that in itself, I mean, Danny and I have, we have a little bit different views. I mean, you feel that they do a little bit of good for Coon Lake, right?
The watershed, yes. I think the watershed, and the watershed is, it may not be necessary, but it's mandatory.
Right, and, and they...
We have to join it.
But they spend a lot, a lot of time, and maybe it's because of money, but they spend a lot of time in Tybo Lake and Martin Lake and all that other stuff up there, which with very little paying attention to the needs of Columbus, which are ditches on the north end of our city. So, that's an issue.
The main problem with the ditches, like I said before, they're county-owned. Watershed is not big enough to taxation, they don't have taxation power to clean the ditches out, so everything belongs to the county, the ditches.
The ditches are county ditches?
No, the ditches that behind Bill's place, the ditches that watershed should be charged of, the county's got charge of them.
Yeah, the county is in charge of them.
The county ain't doing anything?
They don't have any money to clean them out.
We, we, I went in front of them, and we had a meeting when I was on the board there. Had a meeting with Rhonda and a few other const, city officials, town county officials. And all said and done, they, they said that, and the ordinance is when they, the law, when they wrote it up, they only charged ten percent of what it originally cost. Originally cost twenty-five hundred dollars.
Right.
What can they do for two hundred and...
There's no accounting for inflation.
There's no account, yeah, there's no account for money to do it, inflation, no. It doesn't get done.
Yeah, Dave, they're, they're no way as organized and have their stuff together as Rice Creek does. I mean, there's no, they just don't. I mean, it's, it's basically all about carp control for the, and, and you would, you went to many more meetings than I did, but the meetings I was there was all about carp control.
Reason they do so much in, in Linwood, because Linwood is, and East Bassett was one of the bigger contributors. They got the bigger amount of money.
So, after the property sold, after the bridges, we can work on the north end of town.
Okay, so, but in the meantime, you're just, that's your plan?
Work on the north end of town?
No, just wait for their response?
Yep. That's the plan.
So, they could choose to ignore it? Or they, I can't, I thought they couldn't choose not, they can't, they can't choose to ignore it. That's kind of what the last paragraph says.
Right, they can, while the regulations are in place... Right, they can, while the regulations are in place, they don't have authority to change what's mandated in statute. They can change their administrative rules, which is at least under discussion. But in terms of Mr. Krebs' fine, you know, that's between Mr. Krebs and the board. That's something he will have to deal with.
But we sent them there, him there as a city official.
Correct. But the penalty is, is a personal penalty. It's not a, it's not a penalty against the municipality. And so I, the city attorney, I can be involved, as I've been involved with this issue, but I can't intercede on Mr. Krebs' behalf.
Why would anyone go there?
Why would anybody?
Why would us, why would any of us go to one of those things?
No reason to.
I don't know. I don't, I don't disagree with your decision not to expose yourself to that penalty, but I, I can't. I've gone about as far as I can go as a city attorney. I can't take, not discuss personally. I couldn't take on Mr. Peterson's, on either, so.
Okay. All right, so we're going to wait, and we're going to call for, shall I just call Senator Benson? And, and.
Mr. Barr.
Cal. Cal, Barr.
We can certainly, we can do that, or we can invite him to the next meeting, and we can have a discussion with all of you with him, and you can, this issue, or talk about this issue.
Okay, I, I think I'll, I'll give him a call and try to get him here.
Should we try and, we talk, I mean, December, right before, right before.
Well, it's going to take a while for it to happen.
It's a, it's a late start. It's a short session, so they go in in February, so there is time.
Okay. All right. Next up, we have the tax forfeited property. H-46.
I'm unfamiliar with this property, but looking at it, it, it looks like it was a planted lot at one time, and I'm not sure whether it's built or not, but at this point, the county has put it on the tax forfeiture list, and they would like to know whether the city has a use for it, otherwise it will continue on in the process.
Be disposed of.
Looks like all wetlands.
Where is that?
It's just north of you.
North of me?
Yeah, not too far.
Oh, it is. Oh, I know that land.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was where the big explosions were all the time.
No, next door, or maybe even two down from that, right here, next door to the west.
No, that.
This has no house on it.
Yeah, there, yeah, there was no explosions here.
Doghouse that had the dynamite in it?
That was, that was a 7550, I think.
Yeah, that 7550, okay. Yeah, I don't know what the city would do with that. Build a motocross track?
It's all wetlands. Good luck.
Yeah, so no action is necessary, only a few.
Yep. Anybody have any ideas for that?
City does need to buy normal properties, so.
Oh, come on.
I agree with Mark.
I agree with both of you. All right. All right, now we're at the engineer's report. Dennis?
Yes, good evening. The first item was information about neighborhood meetings for 2018 paving improvements, as council directed at the last meeting or the previous meeting. So I just wanted to note that with talking with Elizabeth and Jim Windingstadt, that we reserve the nights of Tuesday, November 14th, and Thursday, November 16th, for potential neighborhood meetings. We'd likely do two meetings each night, break the areas up into four different neighborhoods, because the assessments would likely be different.
Okay.
So.
That would be right between the.
Around the other public hearing.
The other public hearing, so maybe we can get a big white tent to put it outside, do it outside.
If that's okay with those, those nights, and we'll proceed in that.
Okay. Oh, you want a motion to that effect, or just, someone want to make a motion to adopt these two meeting dates?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay.
The next item was, I guess, a discussion more on the next steps for John's Black Dirt, knowing that that'll be ending next, next year.
July, June?
June.
Okay, you've, you've inspected it?
Yeah, I inspected and reported last.
Yeah.
Everything was, there was no violation of the dynamite.
Okay.
So Dennis, is there any plans of hauling out of there all winter, or anything like that?
Not all winter that I'm aware of. I, I understand that he's been hauling recently.
How many days does he have left?
He wasn't, he didn't have the fall booked out.
No, how many, how many haul dates? He, he only has so many days to haul.
Is there like 91 left?
Ninety, oh.
On the 20th, it'll be something like 83 left. He's hauling through the 20th of October.
And he had how many days, 200?
I don't know, it's a countdown.
Oh, okay. Yeah, but it was. It's a clicker. So 83.
Is this really a clicker on the website?
No, I should have been.
Oh, do you? Okay.
Okay.
I think what we're looking for is, so, in, prior to this, when we put the memorandum of understanding and the interim permit together, we, the city staff had a delegation that we met with, course of contracting, and then there was one council member that went through the meetings with us. And so, we wanted to know whether, we wanted to assign a council member to those meetings, so that we can have an exit plan, and the exited plan in place before the end of the interim permit.
Okay. They're not preparing pad sites, or, I thought you set up the northern part. There's one.
Yes, on the north, northeast part, he's preparing future, whether it's one or two sites, or potential housing.
And the southern piece, nothing?
The, right on the corner, where you enter the property, I believe he was considering, you know, it's a triangle there on the east side.
Okay, that'll have to come before, as a plat or something, or meets and bounds or something? How, how would that work? He's going to split it up?
And I think that's the prob, I mean, that's the issue. We don't know what his plan, we don't know what the plan is. And so, I, you know, yes, we told them there was an exit plan, yes, we, you know, indicated there might be housing, but at this point, there isn't a plan to look at.
So they could theoretically just leave it as a farmland, a big pond on a farmland, or no?
No, that's the point. They, they have to have some sort of closure plan. We want to work with them. How do they stabilize the ground? How do they make sure that it's safe?
Isn't that just a staff issue, then?
Yes, it can be. It doesn't have to involve a council member. We would ultimately bring it back here, so there'd be some agreement between the operator and the city.
Sure.
We can do that.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, as long as they stay within their memorandum of understanding, you guys, you know, you guys agree?
Agree.
Yeah.
Yep, so just get a plan and work with them. I, I don't know if we need a council person on that, do we?
That was, that was up to all of you. We could, we could do it at a staff level.
I think you.
We have a lot more documentation now than we talk through that process.
Right. Good. Okay, next thing?
The next item was an update on the 35 design-build project, Anne County Road 54, separate projects, but basically adjacent to each other. On the 35W, or 35 design-build project and Highway 97 interchange, we attended a meeting, we, Elizabeth, myself, and Jesse attended a meeting last Friday with Mindot representation, the contractor, and City of Forest Lake, and the subconsultant, the communication subconsultant for the project. That meeting was mainly about communication, and Jesse will have a lot of involvement with that. You'll have information on your website and whatnot. But other items that they mentioned at the meeting was that for the rest of October, and maybe into early November of this year, there will be lane closures north of 97 on 35, as they prepare for next year with crossovers and maybe removing some medians or some shoulder work. But they, they intend to keep traffic lanes open in both directions, but there could be temporary lane closures on 35. They intend also to move those stockpiles, dirt piles you see closer and adjacent to the existing bridge, so that can surcharge. So when they build the north half of the new bridge, they intend to doing that probably later this fall, early this winter yet. They do not, with the, the project's being phased, they're, the way they phase it is, then from 97, from just north of 97 north is Phase 1, and from the interchange of 97 south is Phase 2. So you won't see any lane closures or ramp closures at 97 until 2019.
Oh.
That's their intent at this point.
Good.
Which would include that temporary off-ramp south bone to maintain that open. So 18 should be fairly clear yet at the, at the interchange. They would start building the north half of the bridge. They would not have any ramp closures. In late 18, early 19, they would close 97 for one weekend to drop the old bridge and start moving traffic over.
Do they move them up the entrance and exit ramps, or do they?
Yes, they would, freeway traffic would go up and over the ramps. So, that's their, that's the main updates on schedules at this point. Like previously mentioned, they intend to keep at least one lane open on 97 at all times, except for the one weekend of the bridge closure. And they are allowed to close the on-off ramps up to, I believe, 40 days, which would be in 2019, while they do that work. Couple other things, just briefly on the, that intersection. The Rice Creek Watershed District is, the city will be doing a permit for the land that was rented to Schaefer. No fee for it, but they are requiring an erosion control and a sediment permit for that four-acre piece. And then, not related to the project exactly, but we got notice from Mindot that 35E is closing this weekend, south of the split, south, just information. They're preparing some.
In each of their places, there should have been a notice, but, so that.
Yeah, they're doing joint repair on the freeway. So that's just more, just informational, not part of this project.
Just for the weekend, though.
Right.
Is it Friday night through?
This, this weekend?
Sunday morning.
Sunday morning?
Yeah.
8:00 PM till 6:00, 6:00 AM, I think, on Monday.
8:00 PM on?
Friday.
Friday? It's going to be closed on Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's why I gave you to notices, because it was news to us.
Traffic on West Freeway, all right.
Yeah, I hadn't seen that publicized anywhere else, so.
Was there a, a detour on that, or?
They're saying the detour, I don't know if it's formal or informal, traffic will detour onto 694, 35W, and 35.
Wow.
Be the official freeway detour.
All right.
So that's just an update. The next item was more specific about the interchange and regarding the potential traffic control at future Hornsby and, and 97. And speaking with Mindot, we have formally requested them to, to study or include traffic control at 97 and Hornsby. As of now, the design pil, the design-build project does not have any.
Money in for that.
Money or modifications for that. It's not in their scope right now. They would be doing their own, it's called a intersection control evaluation, an ACE report. That's more to determine if traffic control is warranted on their, from their end. Should it be a signal? Should it be a roundabout? Should it be a four-way stop, whatever that control is? They recommended, to help with our cause, that we do a traffic impact study.
How much does that cost?
I had it in here 16,500 for a.
I think it's important we do it, just like it's important we should have striped the road, but.
And that, that's more for looking at future conditions, so we can say, maybe existing warrants aren't meant, because to have a traffic signal from Mindot's perspective, you need at least one of nine warrants that they look at, mainly dealing with traffic volume and turning movements. Does take into, into account accident history. But an impact study would look at the future alignment, proposed development on all four quadrants.
We would, we would let them know what we're planning and what our zoning allows for, and they would then look at.
And what would that do to the future, or as soon as the new intersection opens up and shortly after?
Would the cars coming from Forest Lake also play a role on that? I know right now there's.
All traffic would be included, including future traffic from future development.
Okay.
In that study.
All right, I, I think it's important we do that. I don't know, what do you guys think?
Yeah, but I also think it's important we get a light in there.
No, that's what we're talking about.
I know that, but, I mean, traffic study or no traffic study?
You can't just put the light in.
Okay, I understand.
You've got to start from the.
I believe if, if Mindot looked at the conditions today, and we looked at this when we applied for funding in the past, that there were no warrants met as of now. But if we can provide information that there'll be a lot more traffic with future development and turning movements, then they would consider future warrants.
I mean, just about any business, I would think, that would look at that northeast corner, would think a stoplight would be wonderful.
Is coming.
Not to mention there's another wreck there tonight, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping we can do it for less than that, if we get enough existing traffic data from Mindot on 97. I know we, city has some on Hornsby North, so.
Who does the traffic study?
That would be our firm, but actually, our guy, our traffic engineers are booked right now, so we would be subbing it out to another firm with a gentleman that used to work with us, but he has his own firm now.
16,000? What, what do you do for, for that, I should say? I mean, you count the cars, you're doing what?
It's not just counting cars, you're modeling traffic, not only from the intersection, but basically you're looking out a mile in two in each direction, looking at development, future development.
This is some sort of certified traffic engineer?
Yeah, there's a registration, certifications for traffic engineers, and there's official modeling software.
So when we were looking at Howard Lake Drive, the state, I forget the guy's name, was willing to do it on Howard Lake Drive? Why wouldn't they just do it for us?
I'm guessing that would be just a speed study on the, on the road. This is modeling the.
Oh, so a traffic study is, is different than a speed study?
We take into account all existing businesses, all future development.
Okay.
I can't believe Mindot wouldn't have somebody that does that, or an organization.
Aye.
They know if they typically use consultants.
Go, go ahead, Bill.
So Dennis, so when they do those studies, they take into consideration all the traffic coming from Wisconsin, Forest Lake, Scandia. I mean, there's a lot of traffic.
Any traffic on the roadways, whether, no matter where it's coming from.
In the morning, it's huge. And then you got all those buses coming off, going to running aces, dumping off all the people there to, and then once they disperse, that's a, that's an instant, you know, blast.
I think Hornsby is more the road of interest, because that's where the cross traffic is.
No, I know, that's what I'm talking about. But I feel that it all goes through, a lot of it funnels through there.
The other piece of information that it would help with is confirming whether Hornsby should be two lanes, three lanes, four lanes with future traffic. Right now, we're assuming it's three lanes, two lanes with a center dual left turn lane.
Suicide lane. Well, I, I think we should get a, a quote on what's going to take to do this. Don't you guys agree?
Yep.
Get a cost.
Get a cost? I mean, we could just put a, put a dollar value at it, you know, less than 16,000. Save some time, or we could.
Yeah, I mean, that number was an estimate I got from our traffic engineers.
That was just off-the-cuff estimate, though?
How many days does it should take?
Takes probably three or four weeks to, from start to finish.
Elizabeth, we'd pay for this out of, maybe some of the rent from the property, or?
That would be my recommendation, that out of the $75,000 that we received from Schaefer, that we use it towards the traffic study.
Did we get that money already? Is that upfront? All of it?
All of it.
Good job. All right, I entertain a motion to, to do this. I mean, you guys, what do you think?
Yeah.
So we, we could either just get, make a motion to get a quote, or we could actually just make a motion to, to spend up to $16,000. That'd be faster.
Because it's not even going to be our firm doing it, but we would work with.
You mark it up a lot?
No.
Got to work this deal. All right, so anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to, well, boy.
You'll hold up?
Make a motion to, for a traffic study not to exceed $16,000.
Get up to?
Up to.
Okay. Seconder?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion on that?
So Mindot, they'd be putting a traffic signal in, or we'd be paying for it?
We'd be putting it in.
Well, that's another, that's a whole separate issue, is we'd also try to work with Anoka County as part of the bonding money, to see if that could be used, since it is part of Hornsby.
Yeah.
At least for the city share. Typically, it'd be a 50, with Mindot owning two legs and the city owning two legs, it'd typically be a 50. At least for the city share. Typically, it'd be a 50, with MINDOT owning two legs and the city owning two legs, it'd typically be a 50/50 split. But if there's, um, if we can get it into the bonding, all IP dollars.
Is it possible that they may come back with, hey, this is the spot for a roundabout?
It's possible. It's not impossible.
I mean, is that something you guys would be, would rather have, or would you rather have traffic around a boat?
I don't know, anything to slow the traffic down, but, I mean.
Would that study dictate if a light would be feasible over a roundabout, or vice versa?
No, that'd actually be MINDOT's ICE report that would determine what type of control. Ours would be providing data to say controls needed.
If you got a roundabout, you wouldn't get enough, you got too much traffic, you wouldn't be able to bust into the.
Well, the trouble, yeah, that's the trouble with the roundabout. Well, the question would be the pacing from the stop sign on the diverging diamond, whether that pacing is, is gonna be bang, 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 and the roundabout's always full, and you're not gonna get out, just like you can't get out now.
Yeah, there tends to be a little bit more gaps in a roundabout, because people will be a little cautious entering it sometimes, but it could be still problematic.
If you got a lot of cars coming off that highway, of course, off that highway and then diving into that roundabout, and it's a lot of them, you'll never get in that thing. The one in Forest Lake on 61, if there's a lot of traffic coming from one direction, I mean, you have to muscle your way in sometimes to get in there.
Right, and then you're at the mercy of the, uh, the cautious person like Jeff.
I took that one today, coming, it was 3:00, and I actually had to wait, I bet a good minute to get in, and I'm pretty aggressive on the roundabouts. So maybe a light would be better there.
So they, they'll come up with the recommendation, or?
They would come to that conclusion. If there's too much traffic volume in one direction than the other, then the roundabout might not be.
Okay, so at times, light might be better. All right, so we have a motion on the table. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Sort of aye?
Yeah, gotta do it, but.
I think you gotta do it. I mean.
Gotta do it.
We need to stripe the road, too, but.
Maybe down the line somewhere.
So it's the city's supposed to be for, right?
Yep.
Health, safety, and welfare?
We've got a lot of them.
Even the gravel. Okay, so what else you got?
Uh, the next item was a, a motion, I'm requesting a motion from the council to go ahead and approve a second, uh, letter of credit reduction for the woodland development for Priner's Preserve. We've gone through the quantities that they've constructed and paid their contractor and agree. I think it came up with a number of, uh, an additional 253,997 dollars and 86, so they could reduce their letter of credit by.
Okay, someone wanna make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it.
One last reminder is that we do have a public hearing on the 24th for the, uh, 2017 assessment paving projects. Just a reminder.
Okay. Uh, would you guys be all right with moving number 12 after, um, after 15, so we can just go through our personal reports, and then we'll, we'll have a closed meeting? Is that all right? Bill, are you gonna stick around?
Sure.
Okay. You guys all right with that?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll move on to the council report. Danny?
Nothing report.
Mark?
We had a cable commission meeting today and, uh, talked personnel policy again, and, uh.
Are we getting anywhere with that?
With personnel policy?
Getting one, and, and just adopting one?
Well, it's a 60, 70-page report, and we're going over the whole thing, so it's going slow. That's about all we had.
Okay. How are we doing on our, uh?
Equipment?
Audio equipment?
Didn't, didn't come up.
Didn't come up. I'll have to give Paul a call.
Have a good idea.
Bill?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
I'm spent.
Spent? Okay, um, I don't have much. I just think that, uh, you know, this whole issue with the, um, asphalt plant, and, you know, what we plan on using that corridor for down there, um, I think we have to be very cautious and diligent about how we do this. I hope the public hearing will go smoothly. All right, um, public works report? Nothing? Infra, public information coordinator, I'll just call you the picker.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add something to Justice's report. During our meeting on Friday with MINDOT and the public relations, um, people for the, for the bridge project, um, they briefly talked about different modes of communications with, with the community and business owners and such. My suggestion to them was, um, I thought they should come before the council, because I thought maybe all of you had some suggestions as to, um, how you wanted the communications to happen in our community, and they did respond, um, today that they would like to come to your November 20th meeting and talk through some of those options, um, with you.
Okay. Okay, with that said, um, under the Minnesota statute, section 13D.05 subdivision 3C, we are to have a closed meeting to discuss, um, offers for city-owned land. So at this time, we have to close the meeting and shut the camera off and kick everybody out. Sorry about that.